Okay, we will go ahead and call this meeting to a order. The first item on the agenda is our pledge of allegiance. Pulaski County Public Schools and Chrysler Elementary are honored to have Vivian Hash, a third grader, lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Vivian is a star student in every way. She is a straight A student and has a consistent smile on her face. We can tell even with her mask that she is smiling. Vivian brought you to any room in which she walks with a positive attitude. She is a wonderful friend and always strives to help those around her. Her parents and grandparents have done an outstanding job in helping her to develop the wonderful young lady she is. We look forward to seeing and hearing about all of her achievements in the years to come as we are certain there will be many. Vivian, at this time, would you come forward and lead us in the pledge, please? And then remain at the front, and I have a certificate of citizenship to present to you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get to the budget here, we have some reorganization items to take care of. The first of those is the election of the chairman. So at this time, I will open it up for nominations for chairman for 2022. If I could, I would like to nominate Dr. Paige Cash to serve as chairman of the Pulaski County School Board for 2022. Okay, we have a motion to nominate Dr. Cash. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, and we need to have a second. Ms. Porter?
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
And congratulations, Dr. Cash. You got leave back there. You can leave your blue bag.
Now, we've got to move on to the election of the vice chair. I want to make a report for nominations. May I nominate someone?
You would have to relinquish the chair.
I relinquish it to you then.
Okay, do we have a nomination for vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Hurst for vice chair.
Okay, we have a nomination. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a nomination. Do we have a second, Ms. Porter?
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Hurst.
Thank you.
If you ever need to be the runner-up and take this back, it's fine. Thank you, Dr. Sears. Okay, now we move on to the appointment of the clerk. We have a recommendation to reappoint Ms. Teresa Porter as the school board clerk. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, chairman, I'm going to approve it by Dr. Ms. Porter for clerk.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Porter?
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Our next action is the appointment of a deputy clerk. We have a recommended action to appoint Ms. Brenda Crawford as our deputy clerk. Would anyone want to make a motion? Thank you, thank you, Ms. Golden. Did we hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst. Ms. Porter?
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving right along to the appointment of our parliamentarian. We have a recommended action to appoint Mr. Chris Stafford as parliamentarian if he would so choose to do that for the 100th year in a row. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll make the motion to appoint Chris Stafford as parliamentarian.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Porter?
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Our next appointment is the representative to the Southwest Virginia Governing Board.
It's for the governor's school, and Ms. Cox is currently serving in that role. She's also serving as the chairwoman of the governor's school board.
Oh, okay. Would you like to continue in that role, Ms. Cox?
I would.
Okay. Wonderful, thank you. Do I hear a motion to appoint Ms. Cox?
Madam Chairman, I'll make that a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst. Do I hear a second?
I'll say that.
Thank you, Ms. Golden. Ms. Porter?
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Okay, now we move on to our appointment of representatives to the facilities oversight board, formerly the joint services board. I think that traditionally, this is the chair and the vice chair of the school board who serve in this regard.
Great.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to continue with that, with those appointments?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Golden. Do I hear a second?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Ms. Porter?
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Okay. We're getting closer to the end. Seating order. How do you, how do you all feel about when you're sitting? Do we want to change anything? Do you want to continue to sit where we're sitting? Is everybody happy where they're at?
I'm fine, sir.
Do I hear a motion to retain the current seating order? Thank you, Ms. Golden. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Ms. Porter?
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the date, time, and place for regular board meetings. The recommended action is that we continue to hold regular board meetings on the second Tuesday each month at 6:00 PM. We have the dates in here also. Do I hear a motion to continue with that recommended action?
Madam Chairman, I'm going to make a motion if we continue with that recommended action.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst. Ms. Porter?
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we, oh, does it get voting order? I might have just forgot to check it off. Is that the same as the seating order? No.
No, it's different. My apologies, without voting on the voting order. The motion is to have the order as follows from left to right, and to rotate the first of them each month, one chair to the right, as we have been doing. Do I hear a motion to, do I hear a motion on the floor to approve that action?
I make the motion that we continue with the current seat, the current voting order that we have been doing.
Great, thank you, Ms. Cox. Do I have a second?
Yep.
Ms. Porter?
I'm going to call this in the new order. Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm a little bit wrong. Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Appointment of a school board attorney. The recommended action is to retain the firms of Reed Smith, Haney... Sands Anderson and Royal Law Firms as our school board attorneys. Do I hear a motion?
I make the motion to retain them.
Terrific, thank you, Ms. Golden. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst. Ms. Porter?
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Okay, we're almost at the end. Next is the appointment of our superintendent designated to sign VDOE reports. In the past, it's usually been Chris Stafford if he would like to continue in that role. Do I hear a motion to that recommended action?
I'll make that motion. Continue with Chris Stafford as superintendent.
Okay, and let me amend this and say also Lincoln Whitaker, director of technology, is authorized superintendent designated if Chris is unavailable.
Include that in the motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Benson. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Porter?
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Okay. Last part of our reorganization meeting. The approval of the superintendent's contract from July 1st, 2022, to June 30th, 2026. We've all had an opportunity for a couple of months now to see the contract. Is there any discussion? Being no discussion, do I hear a motion to approve the contract as written?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to approve Dr. Sears' contract from July 1st, 2022, to June 30th, 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Ms. Porter?
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'd like to take a moment to say, oh, we appreciate all the work and dedication you have done and shown in the past years since you've been with us at Pulaski County Public Schools. And don't think that this lets you off the book. We expect a lot more in the coming four years. And I'm sure that we'll continue to hound you for it, but we appreciate everything you've done, and thank you.
Thank you, all of our members.
Okay, I think that concludes all of our reorganization. So I'm going to go ahead and open up the floor to our public hearing for our 2022-23 budget. I do not believe people are going to sign up to speak, but if you would come up through the microphone and remove the mask so we can hear you.
Dr. Sears, you don't seem okay with the mask on. I'm just more comfortable.
Absolutely.
Dr. Sears, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name is Candy Castellucio, and I will be speaking as the president of the PCEA this evening. I'm going to try to keep this short and sweet, and if you know me, that's going to be a bit of a challenge. We want to work together with our parents, students, elected officials, and decision-makers to provide the best educational opportunities in the safest environment possible because our kids deserve nothing less. Just last year, employees received a very generous 5% pay raise along with our yearly staff increase. It was so appreciated. Continuing this work will help to retain and recruit the best educational staff, including our teachers, paras, bus drivers, support staff, administrators, and anyone else I may have forgotten in the moment. In addition to compensation, we want to support Pulaski County Public Schools in taking a more progressive and aggressive approach to retaining our staff by creating a full-time position to support and mentor new and probationary teachers. Education is a stressful, is a stressful environment, even for our veteran teachers, and we want new employees to see our commitment and effort to support them in this extraordinarily challenging problem. We also know that all educational staff is the most important factor in our students' education and success. We want our staff to feel valued and as safe as possible in order to be there for our students. As we move forward in this changing approach to mitigation, we ask that resources be allocated to prepare PPE, review and upgrade ventilation systems, and make readily available N95 masks and testing kits for all staff. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Ms. Castellucio.
Good afternoon, everyone. Typically, I don't have any issues, but earlier, when Vivian Hash was leading us in the pledge of allegiance, you mentioned how great her parents and grandparents have done, and you left out her bump. So whoever brought that by, you can fix that next time. That would be greatly appreciated. But, Dr. Sears, I want to thank you for this past Saturday, we had our college readiness event, and you sent out information on that. We held it at Omni Place in Fairlawn, Virginia, and we had representatives from New River Community College, Rono College, Virginia Tech University, and Raff University talking to our students about college. And that's kind of on one end of the spectrum. However, for the budget, I'm going to talk about the other side, and that is making sure that we do everything to prepare our young students for their school career. And so I have something ready titled "Let's Start Strong." We, the undersigned, call upon the Pulaski County School Board and Board of Supervisors to work together to find the funding necessary to give our children the educational attention they need, starting in kindergarten, to be successful in their academic and professional careers in the future. Specifically, we believe that Pulaski County children deserve the same opportunities that West Virginia children receive in kindergarten, including kindergarten classrooms that either A) do not exceed 10 students or B) have a full-time parent educator to support the teacher. This investment will have long-lasting impacts on our community because it will increase the number of children who succeed academically, graduate from high school on time, and do well in life and the workforce. While it will help all of our children, research shows it will have the greatest impact on those from low-income families because strong reading skills break the cycle of intergenerational poverty, boosting our community's economic competitiveness. West Virginia legislators and policymakers have realized this and have invested in small kindergarten classes, class sizes, as a result. All public kindergarten classes in West Virginia are either capped at no more than 10 students or are supplied with a parent educator to support the teacher to provide individualized attention to all children. We believe that Pulaski County children deserve the same opportunities as children in West Virginia are getting. Not only will this investment support families and others already living in our community, but small kindergarten classes will also be a draw for people considering moving to Pulaski County in the future, helping to support the county's 45-30 goal and numerous other components of its comprehensive plan. Thank you for considering our request.
Thank you, Ms. Hash.
Hello, school board. Hello, school board members and fellow community members of Pulaski County. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Megan Graham. I am a Pulaski County parent, and I am here today in support of the Let's Start Strong edition that supports funding for the incorporation of additional kindergarten teachers and parent educators. Providing this funding will decrease kindergarten class sizes and increase classroom support that can have a significant and lasting effect on the success of our Pulaski County students. With smaller class sizes, teachers are better able to create meaningful relationships with their students and a more personalized curriculum that they can tailor to meet the needs of the child, not one that simply checks boxes on the list. Smaller class sizes are also conducive to strengthen social interaction between the children and adults. My daughter, who is a kindergartner at Dublin Elementary, is an extremely bright child. From the age of two, she has spoken in complete sentences. Now she is reading, she has a wit that rivals most adults in her life, and she is a bona fide language master. But when she is in social situations, or ones that include more than three to four people, her introverted personality intensifies, and she becomes silent. It is not until she is completely comfortable that she will begin to shine once again. So when she is in a classroom-type setting with 15 to 18 of her children, I hear that her intelligence and vivacity are both worth. She is not the child that shouts at the correct answers, even though she likely knows them. She is not the child that will volunteer to lead a discussion, even though she likely has a lot to say. And I know she's not alone. That is why I jumped at the chance to put my support behind "Let's Start Strong." We need to eliminate the hesitancy to invest in our schools and our children. Countless studies have shown that for every dollar we invest in early childhood education, there is up to a 13% return in adulthood. Studies have also shown that children learn faster and perform better in smaller classes. We must provide this opportunity for our children. We must do something that addresses the declining reading scores that plague our community. We must start strong right here by finding the funding necessary to invest in our children, our teachers, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Graham.
Is there room for children who might be more comfortable? Dr. Sears, Madam Chairman, school board members. My name is Kara Etzel. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Plasky Elementary, and I'm here to read a letter from the Kindergarten T E Society. We are reaching out to formally request a prioritizing plan of our classroom barriers in kindergarten classrooms. The addition of a second development classroom, bending the students in a number of ways, including more small group reading and math instruction, fewer whole group interruptions, increased support to learning independence, to name a few. This practice has proven successful in both West Virginia and Northern Virginia. This investment will increase the number of children who succeed academically, graduate from high school on time, and will do well in life and workforce, a goal I think we all share for our children. We believe that Pulaski County children deserve the best possible education, and this investment will start them out strong. Thank you for considering our request. Signed, Kara Etzel, Katherine Phillips, Grace Jennings, Leah Gwen, Sarah Abbott, David Bowman, Andrew Price, Madora Condon, Whitney Mew, Jennifer Radcliffe, Ashley Green, and Amy Popzus. Seven of our teachers have added additional comments they would like to share. One states, "Before coming to teach in Plasky County, I was fortunate enough to have a pair in my kindergarten classroom for two years. During that time, all of my students went to first grade at or above reading level in that and county. With the extra support, my students were able to receive 40 minutes of small group pattern instruction daily for both reading and math, as compared to 15 to 20 minutes daily with just as much education." Another teacher stated, "This is my fourth year teaching and has always been a need. However, in the pandemic era, students are more challenged than ever academically, behaviorally, and socially. We have also seen an uptick in the area for cell phone skills. It breaks my heart that I've seen multiple kindergarten students who would have benefited from access to a pair but did not quite qualify for one under existing special education guidelines. These students are falling behind with their practice, leading over into first-grade classrooms this year. Whether it's a special education request or general education and education request, this is a need that is growing and not being met efficiently. The floating pair idea has been raised previously, and this is a good idea, but not nearly as enough, not nearly enough to meet kindergarten students' needs as I see them in our elementary school." The last comment is, "I would like the school board to be aware that children have been entering kindergarten by unique needs that are hard for a classroom teacher to address. We have children coming to school who are not potty-trained and require assistance at the entrance, using the bathroom and changing bullets. These students do not always have documented medical issues and special education services. It is becoming increasingly more difficult to meet the needs of all students academically when we have kids that lack self-help skills. Also, smaller class sizes allow me to focus more on the academic needs of students. A smaller class would also make testing students easier and possibly more accurate. It is hard to test kindergarten students in a classroom of almost 20 kids, where most of our testing is done in school. There are constant disruptions and distractions. We have VKRP pals, Fontis, and Menel in addition to our kindergarten report critications, and we have smaller classes and another adult in the classroom. To assist, we could make more academic gains and hopefully have more students performing on grade level, then we free up our title teachers to focus on more on a smaller number of students. I will forward this letter and additional comments to you for further review. Thank you for your time."
Thank you, Ms. Castellucio, and thank you to your colleagues also.
Well, good evening, Dr. Sears, Madam Chair, school board members. I'm Terry Sternberg. I'm a resident of Pulaski County for about 26 years. I don't have any children. I don't know a lot about the whole school system, but I do know that I'm part of a planning and discussion group that's looking at how we can indeed help you with your racial, social equity program. And insofar as working through conversations with community members, we are really committed to support you all in helping our community get a lot of the pillars in place to help our children grow well socially, intellectually, emotionally, and thrive as human beings and contributors in our community. To that end, we've been working on looking at ways in which we can help as concerned citizens with the effort of helping children be able to master reading skills of our own doing outside of the school system, perhaps trying to create learning centers and learning hubs in communities within our county. We, the undersigned, that Gary Hash started our conversation with a few minutes ago, has 52 undersigned people who have signed this survey form, this report out to y'all, saying we care very much about... care very much about letting our children start strong through this kindergarten profile and survey cap of the size of the classroom or with the number of parent educators that can support the teacher in the kindergarten classrooms. So you've heard from educators, you've heard from community members, you've heard from a parent. I really strongly hope that you will give budgetary consideration to, I know the reduction of the school's class size is very difficult because it would mean having more classrooms in which to put students and teachers, and that may be difficult to come by. But having a full-time parent in each kindergarten classroom could very well be a significant improvement in this issue of helping all of our children really get great foundational learning in kindergarten, especially when it comes to their reading ability and their basic learning at that level. I've spent a few years with the Alliance for Better Childcare Strategies, which is a nonprofit that is no longer in existence mainly because of work that United Way is doing with the community for early childhood education. But in the time I've spent learning about the value of high-quality early childhood education, which isn't necessarily zero to preschool, but rather zero to eight years old, which includes kindergarten, first grade, second grade, the ability for children to arrive at kindergarten ready to learn with their cognitive, social, emotional foundation is so vital to their future. And the Regional Commission for the New River Valley, through their Smart Beginnings program, has been able to quantify by evidence-based outcomes for what happens when children arrive at school and ready to learn, or if their kindergarten years can particularly help them get that footing that they need when they do arrive unready to learn. And the chart that I have seen is the Witch Path chart, and it looks at children ready to learn are on a wonderful upward trajectory, the Vivian Hashes, the children that belong to parents who are well-educated themselves and read to their children, et cetera. But we have a lot of children who do not get that foundational beginning, and so the children unready to learn, not ready to learn, are often seen on a very downward path. When not reading at third-grade levels, their risks are four times as great at dropping out of school, and that path just keeps getting wider. So for the sake, our whole community, all the people here in, please consider funding this request for either capping our kindergarten size as a ten students per teacher, and if that's not feasible, adding a permanent parent in each kindergarten classroom. It would really do us all the world a good. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Sternberg.
Well, everybody, I hope you had a great Christmas and a good New Year. My comment's not really about anything going on tonight. Back in October, we realized that a middle school had been broken into, and some of the students and teachers' information compromised or whatever you want to call it. Dr. Sears, you said that there was going to be a twelve-month complimentary lifeguard or something like that, but they would shake, but you haven't happened.
I'm sorry to interrupt. This is a budget hearing. Is this concerning the budget?
No.
Can you wait, be just a little while until we have our public comment procedures? Right now, we're talking about the...
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay. That's all right. Easy mistake, but I would just like to try and keep the budget in the budget, please. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on our budget this evening?
I'd like to ask the question of some of our elementary school teachers, and we've got at least one former principal and a current principal. How many students would you say arrive to kindergarten with very low executive functioning skills? And I know it differs between schools, but I'm talking about cognitive flexibility, working memory, and inhibitory control.
It's definitely increased over the last couple of years, so as soon as I know we're just talking about it, I'd say somewhere between sixty and seventy percent. That's the biggest part of our day that we do live is discipline with the younger students, and a lot of that is from executive functioning. We have two who are not potty-trained this year, so it's down to about a seventy percent increase.
And so probably, I'm guessing, I've had students who have poor executive functioning skills, and spend a lot of time trying to bring them up to speed. So I'm guessing in kindergarten, you're spending a lot of time trying to do things like, inhibitory control seems to be a real issue with the other students, learn how to take turns and speak, you know.
It's funny that fewer have been identified before they come to us, or speech or anything, and it takes us longer to get them identified. I don't know how much that has to do with, I'm sure part of it is, but you just have a lot of students who have no, I don't know if you would say discipline, but they, yeah, structure, they just lack any kind of experience with a normal, restructured day, and they truly struggle with that for several months of school.
Okay. Thank you for answering the question. I knew it wasn't a large number, but I didn't have any idea it was that.
I would say other than Snowville, probably less than half of our students entering kindergarten had some type of pre-K experience, organized pre-K experience as well. Snowville probably has a bit more than half, but just a slightly over half. I know we typically have two pre-K classrooms and four or five kindergarten classrooms in each elementary school. So we're dealing, the majority of our kindergartens are coming in.
Kindergarten is where you learn all that stuff, but now there's an expectation that you already know most of the things that you used to learn in kindergarten before you enter.
Do you have any idea what the average kindergarten size is, what size is?
We work really hard to keep it below twenty, and the board's been really good about allowing us to bring on additional positions when we get an average above twenty. I know we've had to do it a couple of times at PES since I've been here, and this year we did it at RES. But because of lower class sizes and uprate, we just did a shift at RES, but we have higher additional teachers previously when that has been necessary. Overall, I'd say the average is probably around seventeen or eighteen in kindergarten classes.
And what is the limit?
Twenty-four. Yeah, it's, when you think about, you know, in May and June, we have a ratio of two adults per eighteen pre-K students, and then those students come back in August, then we can put twenty-four of them in a classroom. Some of them weren't in the pre-K program, so there's really not a whole lot of maturity that occurs in those two months between pre-K kindergarten, and yet we're, in some cases, almost tripling the adult-to-adolescent ratio for those kids. It does put us at a deficit in being able to do the more individualized or small-group instruction, and then just getting them adapted to life in school takes much longer when you're dealing with, you know, even fifteen to twenty students in a wood if there were two adults in the room.
I'm sure there's some disparate treatment to consider if you were to separate classrooms by those who had pre-K and those who did not, correct?
Ms. Edsel would probably be better equipped to answer that. If the question is, when you get students in who have been through the pre-K program and those who haven't, are you dealing with really two separate types of students?
Yes. You could separate the class based on who's been in preschool and kindergarten.
If I may, though, it helps to have a few who have been in pre-K.
Yes.
Because they understand the concept of walking in a locked shut-in door, and they might be able to open their own milk. So it would much more benefit the teacher having a little instead of someone having all pre-K and model expectations.
If we wanted to go to ten students per class in kindergarten, would we even have the classroom space?
We would not. That would currently double, or almost double the number of kindergarten teachers we have. Maybe at River Lawn, there would be classroom space because we still have a few empty classrooms there, and in Snowville, we would have the classroom space, but not in Pulaski, Chrysler, or Dublin.
So really, the better solution is to hire parent professionals?
Yes, that would be the most feasible solution.
Who have some training in teaching those executive functioning skills. Can help open milks and fill fish crackers and things like that. I think that that's what elementary teachers do most of their time, is walk around the lunchroom and open milks and brick cups and things like that. So I don't think people realize, I appreciate what you do.
And we can come up with an approximate policy and present that at one of the budget work sessions as to what it would be to have a parent professional in each kindergarten classroom.
I believe that would be a decent...
Would it be to manage to try to hire people with an associate's degree to spend through like a childcare program or something like that, just rather than just anybody off the street?
I think it would be wonderful to have that, maybe as a hiring priority. I don't know that we would be able to fill all positions with that, but that would be a great credential for a kindergarten parent professional to have.
In some counties that consolidate, at least in the majority of their area, students in the early years of school, early elementary, would there be any value in considering the two schools that sit within the town limits that accomplish probably the largest part of the population and restructuring those two schools as to pre-K, K, and then the other elementary grade level?
I think that may be worth looking into, and there are some models like that in the area that we could take a look at there, how they operate, and how their schools work. And I'm assuming we're talking about Chrysler and Chillicothe Elementary, and having one that's intermediate, and one that's a pre-K, two, one that's a grade three through five. And, yeah, I think that may be worth looking at because it would allow us to offer more support to those younger grades, who are consolidated into one year. We can take a look at that and see what, what the results are at the Christiansburg primary or Christiansburg Elementary, and I think that there's another, maybe one in Wichita that does something soon.
I know that we have Pulaski Elementary that is starting to bust its first of its seams, and we may have to look at that just with averages.
We also get more transfer requests back and forth between those two schools than any other two schools, so this may work on the, the halving, since the issue.
I would like that, would you?
Okay.
Okay. Do I have any other questions from the board, or anyone else who'd like to speak on the Okay, well, I hereby declare our public hearing on the budget known. Thank you very much, everybody. You came to speak on the budget, you can go, unless you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, and we welcome you to do that. And I'd like to call to order our regular meeting right now, and I think Dr. Sears will start with some recognitions.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. First, recognitions are for our employees of Mon, Crowther, and Pulaski County, or both of your employees of Mon here. They may not be coming to consent, so maybe we can come back to the recognition at six o'clock and go ahead and do some of the other procedural things that we need to do.
That'd be fine. We could go ahead and we could move to the public comment session. Would you all like to do that? And if the board can indulge, since I had to cut Mr. Williams' door, I'd like to have him come on back up and make his comments.
Sorry about that being out of order there, but I do, I have two questions now that, which y'all were just talking about with the parents and stuff. Does Pulaski County, they still offer early childcare as a class in these schools?
Yes.
Let me ask you this. You know, Pulaski does things now, like with the internships. Okay, my daughter's doing, there's something that she wants to pursue, things like that. Would it be an option to use students that are maybe, if I guess the interns are done for seniors, use the students as an internship to help out in these kindergarten classes as well?
Yes, we have done that to a degree, and it may be worth looking at, just trying to experiment program and recruit more students into.
Okay. All right. All right. Back to my original question. My daughter was included in the information that was taken, in middle school, possibly taken, and you were going to offer a twelve-month life lock or some kind of protection for it. I haven't received any information yet. Can you give me an update as to when that's going down?
Yeah, I'm sorry that you haven't received anything. Everything was sent out, but we will check with them tomorrow and find out why, why you haven't received it, if she was, if her information was involved in that. It was ironstanding that everything had been sent out, but it, I don't know, it could have went to a wrong address or something, but we will follow up with them tomorrow and get that information to you.
All right. Do you need to, I need to give you any information for myself?
If you could give Brenda your phone number or address, then we will contact them tomorrow morning and try to get that straight.
Okay, I'll take care of it. Thank you.
Dr. Sears, do we have anyone? I know we're kind of early. Do we have anyone signed up for the public comment procedures? Do we like to go ahead and speak?
As your staffer is getting a list.
We'll probably review that after six, if that's okay.
That's fine.
We'll go over to the board and get some people to drive after six. We want to make sure everyone has a chance to be heard. Well, should we go ahead with some of the others?
Yeah, I think we could go ahead with the approval of the minutes and the adoption of the agenda and consent items, and then we could go back to the rest of the issues if that works for the board.
Okay. Well, let's jump ahead then to the approval of the minutes. Everyone's had a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting. Do we have any changes or corrections to the minutes? There being none, do I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as written.
Thank you, Ms. Benson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Ms. Porter?
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Fulton?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Move on to the adoption of the agenda. Everyone's had an opportunity to look at the agenda, as much as I seem to be hanguing it tonight. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the agenda this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst. Do I have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Ms. Fulton. Ms. Porter?
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Fulton?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I think everyone's had a chance to look at the consent agenda for the evening. Take a moment if you'd look at the... I think everyone's had a chance to look at the consent agenda for the evening. Take a moment if you'd look at that. Okay, everyone's had an opportunity to look at the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chairman, I'll make that motion, but I also have to say, it makes me sad because my neighbor is on this list of separations of employment. That means she's going to be leaving her wonderful neighborhood. It's going to be sad to see the girl hands she goes. Make a motion to approve the agenda, I mean the consent items.
So we're using her as a teacher and you're using her as a neighbor. Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Cox. Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Benson. Ms. Porter?
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Fulton?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Okay, well, can we move on to the instructional focus or should we go to the information items? One second, Dr. Sears.
We have our employees of the month here now and our teachers of the month are here, senior of the month is here. I'm sorry, what did I say?
I didn't get your script.
Okay. Your employee of the month, leader one of. Okay. So we have the Cryzer teacher employee of the month here and our senior of the month, so I think we can go back to the recognition.
Okay, can we come back to the PCMS teacher employee of the month next meeting?
Yes, if they can make it next month, we can bring them back in.
Okay. Okay, would the board like to join me down in front?
Okay, our employee of the month. Jalaski County Public Schools in Cryzer Elementary, proud to honor Wayne Taylor as the employee of the month for January. Mr. Taylor is the lead custodian of Cryzer. It is said that he goes above and beyond every day. He greets the students as they get off the bus and checks in with staff members to see if they did anything. He is also described as making Cryzer a brighter place with an always positive attitude. He is at the school each morning before daylight, has worked well into the night due to being short of staff in order to make sure that the school was clean and ready for everyone next day. Mr. Taylor is married to Melody Taylor and they have two daughters. Cirilla is a teacher at Auburn Middle School. Did I get her name correct?
Yes, Taylor.
Thank you. And Holly is ready to make Mr. Taylor a pop-pop for the very first time. Joining me congratulating Mr. Taylor, our employee of the month. Hey, did the truck get a burn or nothing?
Yeah, it got a hanger.
You good? Come this way. Turn around a little.
Oh, sorry.
Can you step out of the car? Our next recognition is for teacher of the month. Jalaski County Public Schools in Cryzer Elementary, please to honor Sarah Abbott as teacher of the month for January twenty twenty-two. Mrs. Abbott currently teaches kindergarten in Cryzer. One of her is a true outstanding teacher. Her colleagues recognize her talents and her students are gifted with a loving, kind, nurturing and skilled teacher. She frequently has a very diverse class and she is always patient, encouraging and provides a variety of interventions for each of her students' needs. Mrs. Abbott is also described as having a positive attitude, supportive of her colleagues and always has a smile. Mrs. Abbott is married to Rob Abbott and they have two children, Leyland and Olivia. Would you please welcome me in congratulating our teacher of the month, Sarah Abbott? Yeah, Mrs. Abbott's mom and dad would like to come up, coach. Our final recognition of the afternoon is for our senior of the month. Jalaski County Public Schools and Jalaski County High School, please to honor Gabriella Martin, senior of the month for January twenty twenty-two. Gabriella is the daughter of Kenneth and Eva Martin of Dublin. Gabriella is current FFA student advisor. She has been in FFA all four years and has served as an officer for three years. She is a straight A student who strives to do well in anything she participates in. She attends important public events in the county for PCHS, FFA and networks wherever she goes. Gabriella has an outstanding SAU supervised agriculture experience project where she raises her own sheep and goats. She shows them in local and state shows and is placed high in show that she's participating in. She takes wool from the sheep and makes a sustainable wool clothing and wool felt hardware. She works hard to help keep our school livestock healthy and happy by providing them with fresh food, water and a clean environment. Gabriella has played a role in the development of the sensory trail and has volunteered her own time to work on the sensory trail. She has won many awards to FFA as she competes in a number of career development events, leadership development events. She currently holds her chapter degree and is working on her state degree which she will receive in June. She has a goal to run for the state FFA officer team once she graduates. She plans to attend the River Community College and then transfer to Virginia Tech to study to become a mixed practice veterinarian. When she's not at school or working, she's participating in community service, whether that be with her church, the FFA or personal projects. Gabriella is a positive student who shows her Cooper pride wherever she goes and strives to make our school and community a better place. Would you please welcome or help me recognize our senior of the month, Gabriella Martin?
Okay, I guess we can go on to our instructional focus.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Our first instructional focus would be for Jalaski County Middle School. And this was originally scheduled, they were our focus school in December because other than school, they were not able to be here. So we asked them to come back this evening to give us an instructional focus.
Good evening, gentlemen, school members. Before we get started, we want to make sure one of our students wasn't here. This is Ava Jackson. Ava Jackson? I wanted to check before I made the public announcement. Good evening. I am pleased to present the happening at Calais County High School so far this year. As you can see, our presentation has several themes for our originally scheduled presentation. Our leadership team also came up with a theme of our presentation which is still connected through the joy of learning. What's happening at PCMS? Go back one slide. We're focusing on academic growth and recovery during extension and after school through our academic recovery program. Sports are back for their regular seasons and we've had lots of folks enjoy that this year so far. Writing is still a major focus with efforts towards writing across the curriculum. Club days are back. Woo-hoo. Working and we're working hard to keep everyone safe by following mitigation strategies at school. New roles added to our school this year. We have special education specialists and academic recovery specialists. New assistant principal has been added to our administrative team, Mr. Troy Barkley. Our new track is completed and we'll be ready for spring track. And here are some highlights from our grade levels, social programs and exploratory. Excellent. In December, we host our second annual Not Your Momma's Christmas Tree competition between the faculty and staff of PCMS. We do try to have a little fun while we educate. The eighth grade upstairs team won the competition this year for their Candy Land game themed tree. This is their second year in a row that they've won, so we're going to have to step it up for next year. Club days. PCMS is so excited that we've been able to bring back club days. Students have to look forward to this monkey again. Club days provide choice, creativity and an outlet for fun while at school. And the picture just shows some examples of our clubs. Book club, the T.J. Howard Community Club, FCA, which is Fellowship of Christian Athletics Club, video games club, board games. We continue our next page. Next slide, we have a veterans' care club, card games, getting guitar and more. Clubs are sponsored by teachers and other faculty at school and teachers share their special talents and hobbies with students. Each grade level and subject area was asked to add to our slides in our presentation. For grade six, we are currently have two hundred eighty-six students in sixth grade. In the above photos, students are participating in earthquake drill, math class and science class. On our next slide, Miss Burris, science class. She shares some of the fun that are happening with lab activities. And she also shared an example of extension. During the school day, each grade level provides a thirty-minute extension class for remediation of reading and math or enrichment in science and social studies. Here's an example of the extension class in sixth grade science. In seventh grade, we have some examples from our science classes. In seventh grade, we have two hundred eighty-seven students. Mr. Crawford is Leonard, volunteer to show some of their lab activities. Labs in science are hands-on, but the labs also include writing and lab packets to make predictions, record observations and to record results and reflections. Here's more examples from Miss Leonard's class with some of the labs they did. Let me get on the next. In eighth grade, our English department decided to showcase some of what they're doing. In eighth grade, we have three hundred twenty-six students. That has been the largest grade level to come through our division and continues to be the largest grade level. Students in eighth grade work in teams to complete a character analysis based on the novel The Outsiders in language arts classes. And then they have a special day to dress up like some of the characters in the novel. Eighth grade collaborative learning is also happening in math. We have two of our classes here and math students sometimes partner with other classes for collaborative activities. Here you see Miss Philkins and Miss Taylor's classes working together. Special education. Our special education team serves through a continuum of services. Our goal is to be inclusive and give our students access and support learning based on their need. Read to lead. Here in Rollmore serves our reading specialist for our students and she also supports classroom teachers in our school division with strategies to help all of our students succeed in reading. She worked with special grade groups of students throughout the school day to help bridge the gaps of reading and helping students work towards one grade level success. Fine arts. We have a new band director this year, Mr. Eric Young. This past December, we were able to host our very first band concert for parents in our auditorium. The program included performance in grades six through eight. For choir, choir concerts, joint PCHS and PCMS choir sing the National Anthem before a PCHS volleyball game in October. The PCMS choir honor veterans in concert on November ninth. And grade six through eight choir students perform in the holiday concert in December. This was also the first time they were able to hold a concert in our auditorium. Fine arts to the theater. In the pictures here, students participate in acting and costume design. We also have a new teacher this year in that grade level, I mean in that department, Miss Rachel Hobel. For visual arts, students during contour flower paintings, poetry in motion, tissue paper art for our veterans and using science in art. And of course, we have three displays out front. CTE and agri-science, eighth graders completed in Dylan's ultimate beef showdown book off competition to further investigate the hot button agriculture issues of real versus fake beef. Students have the option to cook real or fake beef patties and ask Miss Dylan to guess which was the fake burger. Sixth graders investigated Virginia's top agricultural commodities. Students learned that Virginia is one of the top producers of chickens. All classes got to learn what it takes to properly care for chickens through our class pets. Our six class pets were baby chicks that the students lovely named Wanda, Harold, Natasha, Winifred, Mary and Sarah. All six chicks have since been given to loving homes where they are Miss Mars students every day. I missed out on all the burgers unfortunately. For CTE business and information and technology class, CTE business received a local grant to purchase WeVideo so that study students can make videos for their classes. Here's a video from a student in Miss Mars class. On that left screen, we have seen a sample video a student created. That video was created by Ava Jackson, who is also one of our students of the month. In the second class, students are creating food truck business. Students will then also use WeVideo to create marketing advertisements for their truck, food truck business. Funny story about the video, it was so good, I thought it was a mistake and that it wasn't a student video. And I contacted technology saying, I can't get this to work. It turns out it was a student created video. My mistake. CTE family consumer science. Students are sewing and ironing crafts for Thanksgiving. Students are also cooking and these pictures, students are making. Technology education or STEM robots class. Here's some of the creative act projects students are doing in CTE STEM and robotics classes. You see they're using our laser printer, building our robots and also designing in the middle language. This program also recently received a check from Wolf over twenty-five thousand. More language for Spanish. Students in eighth grade Spanish classes are reading a book in Spanish called El Caperara, excuse me, Caperara in Montez, which is the copper bear boots, kind of like pussy boots or cat boots. And seventh graders are putting together a travel journey for Mexico City. Physical education, all sixth and seventh graders participate in physical education and health. Physical education. All sixth and seventh graders participate in physical education and health. Students in grade eight select from three unique classes, called Team Sports, Recreation Sports, and Exercises in Health and Science. These are great for our student athletes, for students who like to continue physically active in eighth grade. And finally, in library. Classes have been able to come to library this year for lessons and checking out books. Library design provides such an inviting atmosphere to relax and read. As in our class presentation, when you played on our Equity Program. During our second semester of 2020, 2021, our Equity Team completed an Equity Audit to help determine areas of focus for early Equity in our school. In the summer of 2021, PCMS faculty, parents, and students participated in a training workshop at PCMS with Equity Collaborative Group. During our school opening faculty meeting, I shared with the faculty our progress and plans for the future. Currently, we're in the building stage, but I wanted to share with faculty what is coming to help them think more about Equity as they approach teaching. Our school team recently participated in a training virtually with Equity Collaborative Group to add one tool to help us provide training as a team in the upcoming months. Our, once our team is ready, we will begin looking at where we are and what we need to do to ensure Equity for our students. Thank you. Are there any questions?
You have to let us know what they found out about the beef, what the determination was.
Look, I'm sorry, which one was that?
The beef. I said you have to let us know what the determination was, which one?
Oh, yes, the beef. And they even compared different types of beef. I missed that one. They liked it better. We won't say that too long because we are. Thank you.
Their next instructional focus is Chrysler Arena.
You got the names, dude.
White man in a special floor, so the floor of the chicken pit would match the floor in the kitchen. So they have a nice home now, this one. Before I start, I just want to thank you all so much for all of your support. And then also our student officer, Mary. Thank you for everything that you did, the players, the calls, the phone calls, for being there. I had to have it known to be the way that it happened. And I was going to say, obviously, listening to her for very far without me, I had that feeling. I didn't have it from there to get there in a walk, obviously, but anyhow, I had to.
Are you trying to say I'm short? Okay, everybody does. Okay, next slide. So Equity Survey Results. I think it's important to note that these responses were from last spring and summer. So since that time, we've had more trainings and more meetings, and so I think the responses may have gone up some since that point. But the school policy results show that more than 50% of the respondents felt it fail. Somewhere between latent to emergent. Our assessing community needs was a strength for Chrysler. I think that's strongly, or a lot because of our Title I teachers do so much with our community to make sure that their needs are being met by sending out surveys to parents and community members about what we can do to support the community through school. The School Organization Administration responses show that when it comes to Equity, CES is between emergent and established. School Climate and Environment, the responses showed that at least 50% fail CES is between emergent and established. The Staff, more than 50% of responses were established. Assessment and Placement, most responses were in the emergent area. And Professional Learning, the majority of responses were in the emergent range. And for Standards and Curriculum Development, over 50% of the responses were in the emergent range. So from the results, the CES Equity Team has identified the areas of strength and the areas that we will need support in further professional development. Most areas are in the emergency, in the emergent level, which means we are in the beginning stages of understanding and implementing policies which will ensure Equity of all stakeholders. Through the rest of this year, we're going to continue to meet as an Equity Team to begin our work on writing an Equity Mission Statement for CES that will be aligned with Pulaski County Public Schools' Mission Statement as well. We continue to offer before and after-school tutoring to help with some of the achievement gaps with, because of COVID. We're also offering STEAM to our students on Mondays and Wednesdays. Before and after-school tutoring is on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And we're getting ready to start adding that for our first and second graders because there's a definite need for them as well. So I just had three teachers volunteer to work with those students after school. So we're going to start putting together what we need to get that started. Hopefully, by mid-February, they will be included in that as well. We probably have 60 to 70 students right now. And we would have more if transportation were not an issue. But it's still a large number of students who are coming consistently on Tuesdays and Thursdays for remediation and support. So we've already talked about our Employee of the Month, but there's a cute little picture after this that I wanted to share with you all. Mr. Taylor's trying to tell me he may retire this year, but he's such an integral part of our school that I hope he changes his mind, but that grandbaby, I think, is going to make or break the decision. Here, what Granson's doing in February.
February 25th.
So we don't have long before the new arrival happens. I also am sad to say that Ms. Porterfield thinks she's going to retire in April. And if you know her, Ms. Porterfield, there's been a Porterfield in that chair at the front office since the school opened. So I will have to ask Dr. Sears if that's part of, if that can be part of the job description, is if their last name is Porterfield.
We can fill it out in a big giant.
That's going to be hard. I bought, we got her a new dance coat, and she would change her mind, but she's getting a lot of pressure from home. And that's going to be a huge loss to Chrysler when she is not there anymore after 40 years, 39, 40 years. And her mother-in-law was the secretary before her, so she was there since it opened. So the last thing I want to share with you all, I know it's past Christmas, but I thought this was so cute. You can go to the last place. There's a little video. Ms. Sears, our PE teacher, rewrote The Night Before Christmas. And so I narrated that while I was out on leave. And then Shelley Burris helped put all the pictures together, but I thought you might enjoy seeing that little video. Get it, Jeremiah. Well, it does more than that. I'm so disappointed with this. This is just sad. I checked it, replayed it before we started today to make sure the sound was loud enough. 'Twas the night before Christmas rewritten by Mrs. Sears. 'Twas the night before Christmas went all through the school. But a student was stirring, not even a principal. Their promos were charged in classrooms with care. And it's that Saint Nicholas soon would be there. The children were studying on snow at their desks while visions of school lunch danced on their hips. And Mrs. Porterfield on the phone, and Nurse G with her men, had just settled in for Monday with kids. When upon playground there arose such a sound, the students sprang from her chair to see what was going down. Away through her office she flew like a flash, out the front door and ran in a dash. The ice on the road and the new fallen snow gave the bus drivers the hint they had to go. When one to my wondering eyes would appear, but a line of buses to get the kids out of here. With a little driver so lively and quick, I knew in a moment it was Pulaski County's pig. More rapid than ever, the snow falling fast, and those on bus duty called their names out at last. Now Angie, now Terry, now Jody, Karen, Jerry, and Cindy, oh Mark, oh Melody, John, and David, Whitney. To the top of the drive and all through the town, passed through city and churches and coffee heartbound. And back at the school, we were all working hard to make this Christmas special for critters near and far. And then a twinkle heard down the hall, the hands and moss cleaning the floors and the walls. As a song from ahead was turning around, there the custodians were cleaning it all. We had pre-caved through fit librarians' bed, hairers and title lawn reading specialists, and even visiting. Art and music had toys all over the place. In our VCS cafeteria and guided stuff, the stockings were paste. And sorrow and the office staff, both principals as well. All their heads were busy, tape, ribbons, and notes, and the top of each gift they stuck a big bug. Now Santa is busy with all of us here, drinking hot chocolate and full of Christmas cheer. Santa and the staff worked all through the night. We finished the gifts made with love and work. We filled all the stockings and Santa turned with a jerk. And laying his finger aside of his nose and giving a nod out to the sled, he arose. He sprang out the door, jumped on his sled to fly. He smiled and thanked us, and he said, "Goodnight." But I heard them explain as he drove out of sight. Merry Christmas, little critters, with love, goodnight. Did you all have any questions? Going on in the crowd? Thank you so much.
Okay, Dr. Sears, should we move on to informational items?
Yes, our student representative, Mrs. Kedda, said he did not get here up through St. Louis Stolten. So we will move to budget analysis and Mr. Stafford.
Thank you, Dr. Sears. Madam Chairman and members of the school board, just had a brief budget report to give to you. One of these times, I'm going to do it like so many of these instructional presentations, either do a keep poem or maybe a rap or something like that, but, or not. Very briefly, through the end of December, of course, 50%, we've gone through 50% of our fiscal year. On the revenue side, basic aid payments are currently based on the projected ADM for the year and therefore on budget. Air State sales tax payments are now ahead of budget for this point in the year, actually significantly ahead of budget. Many of the other state revenues that are funded by the lottery, we don't, we won't begin receiving until the latter part of this month. All of our major expenditure areas are under budget for this point in the year. A great portion of that is transportation and technology due to large purchases that have not yet been made, but that really all expenditure areas are under budget. The projected county general fund transfer for December is $1,505,756. That leaves about 8.2 million or 51.44% of our county money available for the remainder of the year. Just by comparison, at the same point last year, we had $9,59,000 or 57.7, 70% of our county funds available. Last year being really an anomaly because of the decreased operations that we were under due to the more restrictions due to COVID. But right now, it's more like a normal year with field trips and athletics and all the normal things that cost money, but the things that we, we want to do as a school system. So that's my budget report in a nutshell. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next informational item is our operations update. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Sears, members of the board. I'll be extremely brief. The workload report is at 67. It's a new record compared to last month. Still keeping them low. Track is closed out, ready for use. You can see a little bit of land disturbance behind it. That's us. I will have it cleaned up in the spring for sure. The building lab, unfortunately, I'm still waiting on that same box I was waiting on last month. No progress there, other than it's sitting there waiting to be used as soon as we get the load to go. Any questions?
How are we fixed for bus drivers?
We went to school today, not good. We went to school tomorrow, not great. Thursday's still unknown at this point, so we'll see. Let's have to see.
Thank you. I know that your favorite thing to do was clear the snow from parking lots and sidewalks, so.
And maintenance department's a little shorthanded right now too, so it's been a little bit of a struggle.
We appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you. Next is our public relations update.
Dr. Sears, Dr. Cash, members of the board. I'll start this off by saying, aggressive. Taking over this position, one of the things we wanted to immediately do was get more information out to parents and the community about, community about what we have going on in the school system. The first thing we did was we became more aggressive on our social media. In the first month, we saw an increase of anywhere between, depending on which category we're looking at, between 150 and 400% increase in activity. In the past 28 days, we've had an additional 27% increase in the number of people that have liked our page. We've had another 46% increase in the number of post engagements. Post views are up 13% and the additional actions taken on the page are up 64%. We're getting the information out to our people and to the community, and their, social media is not our only means of getting that information out. As you're aware, we created a newsletter which was sent out. That is going to continue. We're currently looking at different ways, more cost-effective ways of getting that out. We hope to have that eventually be at least a, a quarterly, hopefully a monthly publication. And it will have information from each school. One of the things about putting information out, as you're all well aware, anytime something bad happens in the school system, it's going to get five or six news cycles. Unfortunately, not the same is true with the good news. We have copies of our last month's news letter sitting out front for anyone who doesn't have one. And I got to say, I've never, I've been involved with the school system for a while, working with newspapers. But I was never fully aware of just how many great things we have going on here. We have kids, teachers, staff members. We have kids, teachers, staff members, and it just, they're really rocking it out. Mr. Williams was up there earlier, Billy Williams. His daughter was one of the ones involved in a fundraiser. We had raised money to create gift boxes for breast cancer survivors in our school, in the high school. And they presented those during breast cancer awareness. You never would have heard that if we hadn't put it out. Our welding department making snowflakes out of horseshoe nails. We've had, you know, information out in the local media with that. We've had it out in the grown-up media, TV and print. So we're getting more information out. A second thing we wanted to work on was more programs to involve more students and more activities. Not everybody's made to be a football player, not everybody can hit a baseball. But everybody does have something they can do. The first program we put together, which has been a huge success so far, is the Classic County Fishing Team. We started that here at the high school and at the middle school. At the middle school meeting, we had county people who had called in or sent messages that they wanted to be involved but couldn't be there for that meeting, right, just over seventy students. At the high school, county everyone, we had somewhere in the neighborhood of forty-five to fifty students. The great thing about this is, looking at the people that we have coming out of that, somewhere around eighty percent of those students are students who are not currently involved in any kind of activity. So we're reaching different students. It was made very clear to them when we talked, there are standards. You have to keep your grade point average up to a passing level. You have to be in good standing with your school. You have to be a good member of your community. Part of the fishing team is, you have to do a certain number of hours of community service. They're all really excited about that. We're moving forward with that, but we're not stopping. The next thing we want to tackle, and this is at the request of a student, Mr. Hurst, Dr. Sears and I spoke with the student advisory committee, and we asked them, "What do you want?" I was shocked when they said, "We want classes on public speaking, and we want a debate team." So with that in mind, we're going to be in the very, very near future looking to put together the Classic County High School and Middle School debate teams. That is a VHSL sanctioned event, and as a season, we're gonna make that happen. We have also gotten information from New River Community College and Rafferty University on public speaking classes. We think that those may be something we can put together as dual enrollment classes that will not only give those kids those classes, but give college credit. So that's what we're looking for. We have some others. We want to get the chess teams back. For those that don't know, Classic County got national championship chess teams. We want, the students want that. We've got a lot of other programs, we'll leave those for another time, but the students are aware we're working to hit them activities. One of the other things that's brought up, and it was talked about earlier, we have a need for teachers and we have a need for parents. Dr. Sears spoke with me, Mr. Hurst spoke with me, and one of the things we're gonna do, I'm currently putting together a packet for our teams that go out to child parents. We're going to create a glossy magazine titled, "Why Pulaski County." I've already got the skeleton built for that. They will take that with them. Basically, when you go to a child parent, you get about three minutes, if you're lucky, in front of the candidates and the students. We're going to give them a book that shows everything great about Classic County and Classic County Public Schools. Because we're not just asking them to come teach here. We want them to come live here and be a part of this community. They need to know about Calfy Park, Plater Lake, Higwood. They need to know about all the things we have here and the things that are near here, that are in close proximity. That project, we're hoping to have it done, hopefully within a month and a half. And they'll be able to take that out. One big thing about this, I have spoken directly, either through email or in person, to several key members of community leadership. I've asked them to help me with this. Jonathan Sweet, the media leader, Anthony Akins, Laura Walters, Shannon Ainsley, the chairman, Peggy White with tourism, Shay Donegan with Parks and Recreation, both mayors. Everyone wants the help of this because they know, if our school system looks good, everybody looks good. If anybody in this county looks bad, we all look bad. So they were very excited about working with me on it, but we're gonna make that happen. The final thing, we're still trying to work up the details on this one, but we want to bring something for next year that is a little bit better for the students, come homecoming. Sent this out to some of you guys, maybe all of you. We want to have a true homecoming parade in downtown Classic. It will involve as many groups as we can get in it. There will be judges. We'll release the students at two o'clock that day, hopefully. Maybe when they come back to school for the game. We've done bonfires before. We want to do whatever we can to let these students know that we're behind them, we support them, and we're gonna do everything we can to make their time with the Classic County Public Schools positive. Questions?
Just a couple of comments real quick, Mr. Grant. Thank you so much for, for your work and, you know, it's obvious that creating this position was the right thing to do. I came to the fishing club meeting at the high school the other day and caught a little bit of that. And we had about thirty-five or forty kids in that, in that meeting, and of course, you know, Mr. Bradley there, of course, Ms. Pauling. And it was, it was really eye-opening to me to see the number of kids that, that this was, did not participate in anything else, any other after-school activities. Every child in Classic County needs a reason to come to school, other than sit in a math class or other than sit in an English class. Kids need a reason to enjoy and look forward to coming to school. Sitting in Jenny Hillman's English class was not my most favorite thing. Or Emily Tate's algebra class was not my most favorite thing. But I loved going to baseball practice, going to ballgames. And to see thirty-some kids come to a fishing meeting that don't, are not participating in anything else in school was really exciting to me. The debate team, I love the idea of a debate team. My nephew was a state runner-up at Turner Ashby High School, and he, his future wife happened to be the state champion. So it was, I'm looking forward to the debate team, and I remember the days of Pulaski County was so strong in chess. So, so yeah, this is exciting. And just, just want you to know, I appreciate what you're doing.
And I appreciate the support you guys have given to these ideas. And also, I gotta say, when I'm out of this school, these teachers, these principals, these staff members, they're excited about these things. Because they see the difference it's making in getting these kids involved. I appreciate your support on that.
I do have a question, and first of all, I will just also say, thank you so much for all the hard work that you're doing and all the great ideals that you're bringing to the school system. It is very refreshing, and we can't be more appreciative of that. Although, as you well know, good work gets more work. So it's gonna happen. But I have a question for you, and probably would involve IT as well. During the sports season, if I want to see what's going on with one of our sports teams, see what's on their schedule, I usually try to go look up, look it up on their Facebook page. The same thing with their, with their drama, I'll go to their page, and then each school has a page. Is there a way that we can feed all of that up into one place so that we can go to one place to see those things?
Actually, before taking this job, I began working on something like that. The idea is to capture the history of, first of all, our athletic programs, because we do have a lot of history. Unfortunately, not all that was always preserved. If you look right now, if you go to classiccountysports.com, or excuse me, dot org. But I've started that, and when I took this position, that kind of got put on the wayside for the moment. After speaking with Dr. Sears about it, we do need that. And that is something, we have to preserve that history of these new students that come in, the new teachers, the new coaches. We want them to know what they're getting into, what they, what's been happening in the past. And we want to be proud of that. And we don't want to live in the past, because we want to keep moving forward. But it's always good to recognize, you know, one of the things with the parade, we want to bring back the state championship. This year coming up is gonna be a big anniversary for that. I forget how many years it's been, that was, we need to remember the past.
Thirty.
Thirty, so there we go. We want to have them in the parade, we want to have Coach X in the parade. We want to be able to sit there and say, "What happened in nineteen eighty-four between Classic and Southern?" And be able to go to a spot on the web and look at it, fine. And it's gonna be a combination of, you know, links to different articles, a combination of having stuff from the yearbooks, I found a lot of stuff in some of those. Unfortunately, some of the newer yearbooks don't have the schedule and the results in them. So we're having to pull some of those out of newspapers or anywhere else we find them. But yes, that is something we're looking at.
As well as current events?
As well as current events.
As well as the current schedules?
What you're asking is if there's a way for all the Facebook pages maybe to feed into the Classic County Public Schools Facebook page, so.
Well, we're gonna have a spot where we can have links to everything, where people can go to find everything in one spot.
Yeah, I want one, I'm asking for specific.
Instead of having a gig.
You know, I want to know what the drama team's doing this week and, you know, what the sports teams are doing this week without going to all the different spots to find that out, and then also know what Dublin Elementary is doing and so forth.
If there was a calendar where principals or whoever their athletic directors could upload their activities work.
Right now, if you look at the high school and the middle school calendars for athletics, those are separate entities. And AD will go in and put the games in. Now, of course, between snow and COVID and everything else, those change sometimes on a daily basis. But they're able to put those on there and then change if they're made automatically, calendars. We could possibly look at making one unified calendar, and on that, not only having when the games are, but when they're over, putting the score. How it turned out, having a link page where you've got the full schedule where they can see that. There are a lot of options.
I appreciate all your hard work and your attention to the sports.
No, it's not just sports, though.
That's what I was gonna say, and the other.
Multiple state championships. We've got a drama department that makes us kind of look great. We've got a choir department that if you went to any of the concerts, Veterans Day or Christmas or any of that, they're incredible.
Right.
We need to celebrate all that. Anything we're successful at, we need to celebrate that.
I would, I would like to see our band programs get some attention that would assist with recruiting and maybe even help to find out what the struggle is with the recruiting there. Is it money or is it time, or is, what is it? Because I'd like to see that field, that field at the football games fall again.
Hopefully, I think a lot of it is been due to COVID. Hopefully, we're gonna see that start to change soon. It's affected everything in our lives, obviously. Hopefully, we can see that change soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. The final information item is calendar items. The BSBA Capitol Conference, which is scheduled for Monday and Tuesday. I believe we've decided we are going to just begin the virtual sessions and set up a meeting with our elected representatives virtually, given the weather forecast. And I think there are others, other divisions that are looking, taking that same step. We have our first budget work session next Tuesday at five PM. I guess we need to decide that we want to continue having those at the school board office. Or we want to have them at the middle school.
This is probably a more central location for everybody.
So you'd like to have the budget work sessions here?
It doesn't matter to me, it's close for me either way, but some of the other board members will be able to work around.
Me personally, I would prefer the school board office for the budget work sessions.
I kind of like the round table effect.
Okay. So we'll plan to hold all, three or four budget work sessions, and we'll plan to hold all those at the school board office.
Do you want to see me talk?
Yeah. And then our next school board meeting is statutory items.
Okay, Dr. Sears, you want to move us on into action items?
Yes, the first action item is returning the Volvo truck to Volvo when they donated that a couple of years ago. We had a hope that we could start moving forward, trying to create a digital mechanics program and put that truck to use. But what we discovered very early on was that's gonna be an extremely expensive endeavor that will take several years of capital planning, because we don't have a, we do not currently have a Bay Area that's even big enough to pull a truck in and getting all the equipment together. It was, it's gonna be much more expensive than we thought. And in the initial agreement, it was decided if we couldn't put it to use for educational purposes, if we would return it to Volvo, they would dispose of it, and then at some point in the future, we could talk about if we were prepared to develop a program, we could talk about what, how they could support us with, with some of their resources at that time. So I would recommend that we approve returning it to Volvo for the, I think the sum was ten dollars, and we will sell it back and then forward.
Okay, well, we have an action on the table to vote on. The sale of the Volvo truck back to Volvo for ten dollars. Do we have a motion to approve the action?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion if we sell the Volvo truck back to Volvo for ten dollars.
I guess I should ask if we got any comments, do we have any comments? Mr. Benson's made a motion, do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Golden. Ms. Porter?
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes. I thought you were gonna ask for a beer.
Want Ms. Cox?
No, thank you.
The next action item is just a revision of our closing codes. Last year they were revised because we had, really had unlimited virtual days that we could offer, so we had virtual days worked into every closing code except Code Zero. So we just wanted to modify that this year and make, with our limit now, we're limited to ten virtual days in a school year because of income and weather. We can apply for a waiver if, over some of the staffing shortages, and we're probably at the point that we're gonna need to do that in the near future if our, the number of COVID cases continue to remain as high as they have been, and we have to continue shutting schools, going to virtual all on, you know, a day every couple of weeks or, you know, two days last week that we had to do. So we can apply for those waivers, but what's written in the state code allows us ten days a year, so we have changed our closing codes to reflect that. Code Two would be when we would offer virtual instruction.
Okay, everybody's had a chance to look at the revised closing codes. You have any questions for Dr. Sears? Any comments or discussion?
What's the code for tomorrow?
Well, tomorrow's COVID one.
Testing you.
Do I have a motion to approve the revised closing codes? Madam Chairman, I'll make that motion. Thank you, Ms. Cox, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst, Ms. Porter?
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Porter.
And the final recommendation is regarding Governor Youngkin's executive order number two, making masks or eliminating the mask mandate for public schools. And we do know that there's all kinds of guidance going on about this, that, you know, that there are legal opinions that the Senate Bill that was passed as state law last year trumps a governor's order. And there are school divisions that are planning to fight that fight and, you know, expect. know, expect the challenge of this court. But based off of the interactions that we've had and feedback that we've got, we've decided that one will not, or one of our recommendations is, is that we not get into that part of it. We have been consistent not long in following the guidance from the governor's office in our COVID response, and so in order to remain consistent, I would recommend that we approve the amendment to our COVID response plan and adopt the executive order two, making mask optional. Currently, the date that that will go into effect will be Monday, January the 24th.
Okay. Everyone's had a chance to read the COVID Response Protocol Amendment in response to Governor Youngkin's executive order number two. Do we have any discussion or any comments? There being none, do I have a motion to approve the COVID Response Protocol Amendment in response to Governor Youngkin's executive order number two as presented?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to approve the COVID Response Protocol Amendment in response to Governor Youngkin's executive order number two as presented.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hurst. Do we hear a second? Thank you, Ms. Golden. Ms. Porter?
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Porter. Now we move on to future agenda items requested by board members. Does anyone have anything they would like to ask Dr. Sears to adhere to right now or put on the agenda? If not, you know we're signing. You're not planning to run away, are you? And that brings us to our second recognition of citizens part of the agenda. Do we have anyone signed up for the second? Do we have anyone who would like to speak? Hey, do we have any further remarks from the board members? I would like to thank my fellow board members for having the confidence in me to vote me as chairman this evening, and I hope that I can fulfill that confidence that you have in me, and I appreciate it. You're the best, board members, anybody could ever want to serve. Hey, and we are adjourned.